The first order of business would be that the commission needs to elect a chair pro temp for just for tonight. So I'll, I'll take nominations for a chair pro temp.
I'd like to nominate Erin.
Second.
Gee, thanks, guys.
Close nominations now.
I said tag your it when we started.
I shouldn't have said anything. I should have stayed on mute.
So nominations are closed. All those in favor of Erin as a chair pro temp for this evening?
Alright.
Aye.
Erin?
I'm abstaining. How's that? Alright. Well, you know what, though? I need to pull up the agenda. Because I'm on my laptop, so I don't have. So, Michael, can you cue me?
I will, I will. I'll help you out. So.
So we have to, I mean, first order would be taking attendance and then, right? Okay. So we know that Bill and Alan are not here. Holly Bem is here. I see David. Did I see David Bloom? Yep, I see David Bloom. I know Craig could not be here. So that's three regular members, and I see Julie and Rich that we concede as regular members. Correct?
That's correct.
Alright, and that's five, so that definitely gives us a quorum.
Yeah.
Okay. Whoops, I froze. Oops, I froze.
Erin, I'm having audio issues. I'm on, but I can't, not audio, video. I can't do video, so I apologize.
You know what, Julie? My video, it was hard to get on. I don't know if it's something in the airwaves or...
It could be, but I'm here. I just do not have video capabilities right now.
Oh, okay, great. Well, thank you for being here.
Okay.
Alright.
So your next order of business would be approval of the minutes from the June 8th meeting of 2021?
I looked them over. I didn't see any corrections. I don't know, did anybody have any corrections on page one?
I don't remember there being pages or line numbers, and didn't we see on section three, they said motion, all in favor, one abstain, abstine? I'm sorry, I can't even speak today. I think it should be five instead of all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You see that, Michael?
Five in favor, yeah.
Oh, that's a good catch, though. I didn't see, yeah.
I always have one good one on me, you know? What a meeting.
Well, and there weren't a lot, I mean, they weren't long minutes, but I, you know.
So it was that one. And then on section five, I'm not sure there was a motion because there was no business. So I'm thinking that that should be excluded.
I don't.
It says Chairman Rice made a motion to return the positive referral.
On section five?
Oh, oh, section five, sorry.
It was like new applications or new business. Sorry, I don't have it up anymore.
Oh, yeah, I see what you mean. Good point.
There was a motion. I think you're right.
Yeah.
That, that's where you were discussing the referral from the zoning commission regarding the changes to the industrial zoning regs. So there was, you did make a motion and a vote on that.
Oh, we did.
I thought that was further down, though. Let me find it.
Yeah, wasn't that the, the next, that was what I always thought we were talking about, section six, six?
No, section five.
Oh, section four, I'm sorry.
Four or five, I'm sorry.
Yep.
It's hard without our Secretary Allen here to help walk us through.
Well, and it's, it's hard when they're not numbered. The lines aren't numbered.
Yes, that too.
We'll address that. We'll address that, don't worry.
Okay, yeah. I, just, just for reference, I mean, it's just easier to, yeah. Alright, so, Michael, are you clear on what the changes were? Oh, okay. Alright, so is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, awesome, thank you.
Rich and I are a team tonight.
You are. David looks so small, David. He looks so small, David. He looks so small, David. Oh, my God.
Hold on, sorry. That's, that's my fault. I'm leaving this meeting and joining on the other computer.
I think Erin, I think we have to vote on accepting the minutes.
I'm sorry, thank you. So there's a motion on the table to accept the minutes as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Alright, so the minutes as amended pass. Thank you. Alright.
So Erin, your, your next order of business is the public hearing for application 2103. It's the application of Riverbend Kinetic CT LLC owner, Trust Republic Lands applicant, Town of Simsbury applicant for approval for a six lot re-subdivision of several properties. I'll go through and list them, I guess, we don't have to say this for the rest of the night, but it's two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 Barn Owl Court, 4 and 68 Barn Swallow Court, a property off of Barn Door Hills Road, 123 and 57 Burbank Road, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 18, 20, 22, 24, 26, 28, 30, 36 Cold Spring Road, 39, 43, 45, and 47 County Road, fire, a parcel that is located off of Firetown Road, 6, 9, the 975 Fort Cynthia Lane, parcel off of Holcomb Street, parcel off of Hoskins, a parcel off of Juniper Lane, and 13591161, 63, 65, 67, 69 Meadowwood Circle, a parcel off of Reed Drive, 2356811112141617121222426 and lovely 28 Sundial Circle. We have 468, who do we appreciate? Number 10 Thistle, Thistle Down Road, property off of Torch Lane, and the last group is 23 5789101112 Turkey Hill Road. This is a, a purpose of the re-subdivision. It's combined the above referenced lots and properties and creates six lots per the plan provided. It's a zone, housing opportunity zone. This was the former, formerly, excuse me, the formula referred to as Meadowwood subdivision. And if it's okay with the commission, I'll share a few maps first and just give a quick background, and then I'll turn it over, I'll turn it over to Honor Lawler to kind of expand upon some of the comments that I'll make. And let me just make sure I got the right maps up.
And I'm also gonna, I'm gonna try to pull some things up on my PC.
Okay. And just bear with me, I'll get the screen up. So what you see right here is the Meadowwood subdivision that was approved by the courts back in 2008. This was, and make sure, I don't want to have anything blocked, this was a affordable housing development called for the construction of 296 homes with some public roads, some private roads, along with some conservation, areas of conservation and open space. These areas, the open space and conservation easements were deeded to the town as part of open space purchase of the Meadowwood project. And I'll go to the next map to show. All those areas in green that you saw earlier have to be extinguished, and all those lots are being combined. They're being combined into six parcels, which I color coded, and Honor can, Honor can discuss kind of the background of why these parcels were, were chosen, their, the, the structure. But the short, the short of the story is between sources of funding for the purchasing of, of the property for open space purposes, and then the little, the yellow box down, down below, which is called Lot 6, which I, if you could see my cursor, I'm moving around there. That's 24 acres that the town is purchasing. At this point, the intended use by the town has been discussed as sports fields for the area. And the only other different one is over here on Lot number three. A budding property owner was under contract with Griffin Land to purchase that building lot. So that would be the, if, if we had to say what's the, what's the two areas where you could see development? One would be that one flag lot off of Holcomb Street, should it ever be built on. The other is the sports fields if they were to be built on Lot 6. Under state statute, in my staff report, I kind of outlined what are the three actions that trigger a re-subdivision in Connecticut? One is when you modify the lot lines of a previously approved subdivision to create additional building lots. The other is when you modify streetlight layouts, if you expand or abandon street layouts. The last one is when there are changes made to areas that are dedicated to open space. In the case of this application, it hit two out of the three reasons why this is considered a re-subdivision. But as I said, majority of the area that is being subdivided or combined is really for conservation purposes. You're, you're not seeing more building lots. If anything, you're going basically from 296 building lots out there, because you had 296 homes associated with the approval, down to one building lot and another parcel that is, is being deeded to the town. And I don't know, Honor from the Trust Republic Lands, would you like to pick it up?
Sure. Just if you keep the map here, Mike, that would be great. To give a little bit of background as to the the layout that was chosen, the Trust Republic Land worked with the town on this layout, and essentially Lot 6 in yellow is the land that will be unencumbered and deeded to the town of Simsbury, unencumbered, so free of any easements or anything that would prevent any type of future use on the property. So it could be athletic fields, could be community farms, it could be, you know, a development of some, some kind. Lot 5 is the area that is slated for farmland preservation, and so with that, the, the land would be encumbered by an easement held by the State of Connecticut and managed by the Connecticut Department of Agriculture. And so that deed will stipulate that the land is to be used, you know, for agricultural purposes, and, and the town will, will again be the fee owner of that, that law as well. Lots 1 in blue on the south side of Firetown, where my cursor is, Lot 4 in red, and Lot 2 are all slated for open space and trails, and so there will be an easement held by the State of Connecticut again, and further the, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection that will stipulate that the land should be left in its sort of natural state and for public access and use. So, so that will, those three lots will actually have all the same easement on top of them. And then Lot 3, as Mike said, will be deeded to be a budding landowner per a contract that predated the Trust Republic Lands involvement in this, in this deal.
Do you want to just explain maybe a little bit about the barns, the barn preservation, and maybe just add that in?
Yeah, I missed that a little bit. So, so as part of the funding model for, for the purchase of this property, we've secured a number of grants. We're almost, almost all the way there. And one of those grants came from the State Historic Preservation Office through the Department of Energy, the Department of Economic and Community Development. And that grant is providing both purchase capital for the purchasing this entire property, as well as about $300,000 towards the restoration and stabilization of some of these historic barns. And so the historic barns on both the south side of Firetown and in Lot 5 on Hoskins Road, there are those three barns on the front that, that are historic in nature and will, you know, possibly be sort of stabilized if they're still in okay condition by the time we close to, to provide the aesthetic and historic nature of the site that was so interesting and, and compelling to this, you know, purchase and, and transaction in the first place. And so those barns have a lot of historic and cultural value, and the State Historic Preservation Office has dedicated funds to help restore and stabilize those to the extent that we can with the money that they've provided. We've also secured some private capital to do more restoration and stabilization, so that should take us a little further, and and we're sort of figuring out that piece at this point. And tho, and those areas are actually excluded from, from their respective easements, as well as the the barns in the interior of Lot, sorry, the, the barns on Lot 5 are actually included within the easement because the Department of Agriculture understands that agricultural structures are integral to the farming component of, of their easements, while the DEP, Department of Energy, Environmental Protection prefers that structures not be included within their easement areas because they don't want to manage and, and maintain and have to deal with the liabilities there. And so those areas, both on the south side of Firetown Road in Lot 1 and the interior of Lot 4 are actually excluded from the easement, but, but not subdividable or, you know, severable from the rest of the lot.
So can I, can I ask, Michael, I didn't see, I didn't get an email with the Dropbox for today, so I apologize. So where, where is this six, six lot subdivision? Where is this supposed to go and what?
It, so it's off of Hoskins County and Firetown Road. It's, it's.
Where in relation to this map?
You mean where the, the roads are? Yeah, like, I can zoom in.
Where's the six lot subdivision? Oh, there it is.
That's it.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. I didn't get an email, so I, I'm a little, I apologize.
Erin, I think it got buried because there was a lot of change. So if you look at your email where Craig made a comment about his attendance for tonight, it'll be at the bottom of that trail.
Oh, you know what? I think I, yeah, I'll have to, okay.
Yeah, mine was, I didn't get a direct email either. I, I was attached on, on something that Bill.
You know what? Thank you, Julie, because now I see a Dropbox.
Okay, good. Yeah, it took me a while, too.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I didn't see it. Okay.
Yeah, it's the mail system.
Excuse me, can I just ask, this map is very difficult to read. Can you just show us where County Road is and Firetown Road is?
Hold on. Could we let, just for the members of the public, this is first the commission will speak, and then we'll go through the members of public. But, and I appreciate if everyone, if you're not speaking, to mute yourselves. So just for, for reference, for the members, for the party here, where my mouse is right now, that's County Road.
Okay.
Over here is Hoskins. This is Firetown Road. This is Barn Door Hills coming up here. This is the triangle. And here's, here is Holcomb Street coming right here. And then just for a few budding interested parties, I'll just zoom in, maybe I can show. I don't know if we'll be able to read it. This is Clifton Drive.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yep.
Uh, this is Scarborough. Directly across here is, I'm gonna test my vision. Sorry, it's a little grainy. Wyndham is up here, Hamilton, Talon, Hampshire.
Yep. So, in relation to all of this, I'm sorry, so where is, I'm still kind of confused as to where this subdivision would be. Does that?
Would you prefer, like, I show an aerial photograph of the area?
That might be good.
Alright, give one, yeah.
I just want to get my bearings, and I apologize to people. Does, is anybody else having trouble visualizing this, or is it just me? Okay, it's just me.
Alright, one second. I'll pull up the GIS and I'll, I'll get, I'll go to there.
Um, while he's doing that, I'd like to just ask a question of Honor. And this might be beyond your, your view, but when we were first told about Metaview, there was also some talk about a section for a tribute, a historical area for concerning Martin Luther King's time in the tobacco fields. Is that still a go, or has that been changed, or is it outside your jurisdiction, or?
No, that's still very much a part of this project. The, the barns on Firetown Road on the south side, there's four remaining, and there were five, one fell down during the course of the project. But those, those barns have, they've been there since, I think, you know, the earliest aerial photography, 1934 or something, shows them, and so they are very much historic. The State Historic Preservation Office is very interested in seeing those protected to the extent that they can be, and, and part of the funds that are coming to the Trust Republic Land to implement the historic preservation component, the barn restoration and stabilization, includes an interpretive element, and so part of the funds will go towards, towards creating a space that is authentic to the, to the site and to the public, and it will, you know, likely have a lot of community input and public input to it in combination with the town and the people of Simsbury and the State Historic Preservation Office and, and many others that will help shape how that looks and what makes the, what makes the interpretive elements, you know, come alive for this, for this property.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I was hoping, I was hoping that we're still there. Thank you.
Michael, excuse my, my foggy brain. I, I, no need to go through anymore. I'm totally, okay, but thank you. I, I.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm just a little thick today.
It's good to see. Thank you for requesting it. It, I think it helps us all get, re-establish our perspective.
Yeah, it's hard sometimes. I mean, you know, we've seen so many different drawings, but I, thank you, Michael. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. So now we would open to public comment, Michael?
Yes, that's correct now.
So we ask that people state who they are and where they live, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I know that somebody, and I apologize, I don't, I didn't see the name, but somebody had a question? A woman? No? I thought somebody had a question for you, Michael.
I think they were just asking about where the road layouts, but.
Oh, but you answered that question. Okay.
If there's any members of the public have any questions or would like to make any comments, now is the time. Once the commission closes the public hearing, you cannot participate in the sense of making comments or statements.
This is John Coyle from Lake Catherine Lane. Another thing I was gonna say, Lot 5 had the three barns. One barn came down last week. So I don't know if that affects anything as far as the money for Lot 5, again, from the state. I don't know if it fell down, but there was machinery out there, and it's, it's, it's gone.
Mike, can I respond?
Yeah, go for it. You go first.
Yeah, so that's, that's right, and I, I apologize because I am a little bit fresh off a vacation, but that was scheduled for the end of June. That barn was in, in very dire state, and so between the town and TPL and, and the landowner, we agreed that, you know, that needed to come down during, you know, before the town were to acquire that. And so, yes, now the, the view is a little different now, but it, it needed to happen. And it does not affect the money coming into that project, that portion of the project.
Thank you.
No time to lose.
Well, are the other two barns slated to be restored, so to speak, or are those two not?
Yes, to the extent that we have funding to do that, and so we're, we have some public funding. We have $300,000 in public money and $100,000 in private money to restore as many of the historic barns as we can, including the two left on Hoskins and the four left on Firetown. And $400,000 doesn't, doesn't get us all the way to bringing those into, you know, shipshape, but it gets us to the point where we can restore the ones that are, you know, most historical and, you know, do the best we can, and we will be fundraising to, to try and get even further, but it's, it's hard. So we'll, we'll try to do the best we can and work with the town on that post-closing.
So Honor, is one of those what is slated to be the Martin Luther King exhibit, or whatever we want to call, is rated in one of those barns, or is that?
Yeah, so, so the ones on Firetown Road, that's where we've, we've sort of designated that that will be the, the historic site portion, kind of component, while the whole landscape is, you could argue, is a historic site and, and creates the the sort of interpretive element that we're going for. You know, the actual interpretive elements that we do plan will likely be, be on the, the Firetown Road area. And how that looks is, is just up in the air right now, because we don't want to pre-plan what the interpretive display will look like without going to, you know, a number of stakeholders who really care about the site and know about the history and want to, to make it authentic to all visitors. And so, so it's, it's a little cart before the horse, but we, we just want to make sure that there's appropriate community involvement before we say, okay, we're gonna have, you know, signs inside Barn 3, and we're gonna put a mural on the, you know, that just, we want to have some more involvement before we get too far down that road.
But it would be in the Firetown Road area?
Yes, that's.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Oh, this is Janet Calibro, 25 Hampton Circle. I was the person that spoke before, and I apologize, I didn't know the protocol. But thank you for clarifying. My question is, and, and possibly I just don't understand, the division into the numbered sections. Is that so in the future, one particular section could change whatever the zoning is, or I'm not quite sure why we have all of the different sections, other than, of course, the one parcel that was pre-agreed upon, and the one for development?
Michael, can you answer that?
Yeah, I mean, and Honor can expand. It's, it's, it's simply funding. Funding's what's driving the meets and bounds of these lots. And no, it wouldn't change the zoning in the future, like, use-wise, because once, once the purchase goes through, and Honor, correct me wrong, there will be deed restrictions that basically we're selling development rights away. They, they are now, they will be considered protected open space. That's really what drove the bus of, of the configuration of the fi, the six lots. Correct, Honor?
Yeah, that, that's right. And so I am, I am not a subdivision expert, but we worked with the town, and the reason that the DEP open space area has the three distinct lots is because you cannot have a lot. You know, originally, you might say, okay, well, all the deep open space areas would be one lot, but they are divided by the roads that exist on that property, and so they had to be three separate lots. But once the easement is in place, there are restrictions within that easement that prevent subdivision. And so it's, it seems a little counterintuitive. We're, we're re-subdividing to put an easement on that says you can't subdivide. But that's sort of the way that it has to go, you know, to, in order to get to the point where we can put on those easements. And so, and then, you know, to further that, the, the Department of Agriculture, you know, just from a logistical standpoint, it makes sense to have it as a separate lot, you know, so that it's, it's just differentiated in that way anyway.
Thank you for clarifying. Do we have a closing date estimate at this point?
Yeah, we are looking to September.
Great, thank you.
Hello? Can, can anybody hear? I'm not sure how this works.
Yeah. Just state your name and where you live.
Okay, so I'm Mary Day Ryerson. This is my mom, DeeDee Ryerson, and we live directly in the middle of the Triangle area at 98 Holcomb Street. So we've had, we've been here for almost 30-plus years, so we have a very vested interest in what's going on with the barns and Firetown and everything. I'm also a farmer, so I have a vested interest in general in all of this. So I have just a few questions. Number one with Lot number one. Number one with Lot Number One, I believe, which is where the barns are and everything. Um, so that's, that's under the Connecticut DEP, right? For the open space and everything you guys have been talking about with the Martin Luther King. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. Um, so I sort of, I guess one of my questions is, is Calbro had been farming the, the open farmland right behind those barns? And I'm just curious if there's, now that it's all in one um big lot, which I know includes wetlands and the pond that are there and everything else. Um, you know, is, is, is somebody still gonna either hay that, do hay or mow it or something? Because that is actually pretty good farmland back there. So I'm just sort of curious if it would be able, like, I know the town owns other farmland that they rent out to like local farmers. So I was curious if that would be able to be done there or if not, because it's just part of the DEP, like, open space area. But, you know, are there plans or is somebody thinking about how to at least maintain that area sort of open?
Do you have any answer, Mike? Um, yeah, thanks. So, so the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection's easement does not preclude farming um as sort of an ancillary use to the open space and maintaining the natural state of the property. So, you know, hay, um, you know, other cultivated uses are allowed under their easement. And ultimately, the town, you know, post-closing has to make some decisions about how that farmland will be utilized in the future. And so it's not the Trust for Public Land to say how that'll be used. And it's, you know, probably not Mike's role to say how it'll be used. But there's probably gonna be some community, you know, meetings about, you know, how, how and who and where and what land gets cultivated. It is absolutely, you're right, prime soil, um, you know, the best of the best in Connecticut. So it, in some ways, you know, I think there's probably, it make, makes for a good case to keep using it, some of it, at least for farmland. But ultimately, those decisions come down to, um, I think, the town leadership and, and folks um within the community.
So, so it would be considered open space and the Open Space Committee is uh charged with the management of open space? So they would come up with a plan on how to manage these properties?
And then just out of curiosity, because I, I've worked on farms for so long that I haven't really been involved in town stuff, but I'd like to get involved. So is there, can you just tell me quickly, like, how to get involved in the Open Space Committee? Is that what, what it's called?
So the Open Space Committee is comprised of a, a member from the Planning Commission, a member from the Zoning Commission, a member from the Parks and Rec, a member from the Conservation Commission and two members at large of the public.
Okay. And this is all like.
Last one, the first select woman or, or it's like, select woman or man.
Oh, okay, cool. Okay.
Um, DeeDee, uh, all of the town commissions are always looking for new volunteers. Quite often, they're being staffed by either running, a lot of them are, you have to run for office in either Democrat or Republican. Uh, but oh, if she wants to get into a non-elected board, what is that po, what is that procedure, Mike?
So you can go through the town clerk's website and there's a commission page that shows all the, all the um commissions throughout the, the town. The elected versus appointed. And in the appointed ones, um, you could apply to serve in a capacity of a vacancy that's on one of those boards. So I, I would say the first bet is to go to the town clerk's website and see if there's any vacancies. You know, for example, open space or conservation, you know, one of those boards that's down, what, what you're looking to do.
Okay, I'm gonna try and, try and work on that because I'm definitely, I would like to get involved, finally.
You, uh, new, uh, people of interest are highly encouraged. And I, I speak for both political parties and for the town. People will find something for you to do if you wanna help.
I would, I would love to. Um, one other quick question. Um, the Lot Six, I believe, the, the one in yellow that you guys were talking about, um, that's uh for the tat, like, for the town to decide what to use. But that could also be decided to be used as like, I, I mean, I saw it said sports fields on the map, but um, it's kind of up, it could be for anything, right? Like, depending on how the town ends up deciding to play that out.
Yes, yes, but the use, it just has to meet the zoning regulations. That's the, that's gonna be the key. But, but the town would have that ability to determine how they want to use it, which would go through meetings, et cetera. The Board of Selectmen most likely would have to have a public hearing to come up with a plan.
Okay, and one final question. Um, uh, in terms of just the closing date for all of this, we had sort of heard rumors from some of our other neighbors that they're, they're, like, we were still trying to, I don't know, we were down in funding or there was still some extra money that needed to be raised in order to fully close. I was just wondering what, where we are on that for all of Meadowwood.
Mike, can I answer that? Um, so I think there's, there is purchase capital um that we are securing to buy the property. And then there are private funds um that we raise to cover the Trust for Public Land's costs. And we raise those, we don't go to the town for those. We go to, you know, our, the people who love our mission and support what we do and, you know, projects like this and across the state and across the country, actually. And so we, we have secured almost all of the purchase capital. We have one outstanding grant. Um, and we have secured most of the private capital to do the acquisition. So we still have some money to raise. But what the exact number is, I don't know, probably somewhere in the range of a hundred thousand dollars. And to, you know, cover all the time and the expenses of doing a transaction at this scale. It's, it's very expensive. Um, and so that's, that's sort of where things are. We've, we've got most of the purchase capital, we've got most of the private capital and just about closing the gap from, between now and September.
Okay, so is this like a fundraising thing that we could get our neighbors to be aware of or?
Yep. Absolutely. Feel free to reach out to me.
Okay, what, sorry, who, who is this? Is this Honor?
This is, this is Honor Lawler with the Trust for Public Land and I'm, um, my contact information should be somewhere all over those town documents. But I'm happy, you're happy, my email is, is my um, well, icon thing right now, so.
Oh, okay, I think I did see, I don't know where it went, but I did see that at one point. Okay. I think the, do we have any other questions? No, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you. Great questions. And Michael, if somebody is interested in potentially farming, they could go to the town to find out more about that once it closes, correct? Okay.
Correct, correct.
I mean, it, personally, I'm just gonna, it would be nice if someone in town chose to farm it, to use it to the benefit of the townspeople. I mean, that could be kind of cool. Just saying. Anyway, be nice. Um, anybody else? I see there's several people here.
Hi, this is Linda Eklund.
Hi, Linda. And where do you live?
Uh, we live at one oh six Holcomb.
Okay.
Um, I've got children in squadron line. And I have to admit that we couldn't join the meeting until about twenty minutes after it started. So we might have missed this part of it. But when I'm looking at the proposals that were provided on the agenda, I see a lot of housing subdivisions and this might have already been discussed. But, um, so apologies, but my question as a parent that has an incoming second and incoming third grader would be, what are we doing for all these families as far as schooling is concerned? Because our kids' classrooms, there are, there already aren't enough classrooms in squadron. So am I reading these maps wrong? Because it seems like a whole lot of homes.
Um, Linda, oh, these were homes that were never built and will not now be built. So um, back in two thousand and eight, um, of, of, the developer was uh allowed to propose these or submit these into the public record as um permitted uh homes and streets to build on. And in the meantime, the developer has decided to um sell this land to these various uh, uh, public entities that will now preserve it in perpetuity for uh, uh, an easement, so there will be no development at all. So essentially, the houses that were um already planned are, are, we are now abandoning the street layout of those previous subdivisions. Did I say that, Mike? Right, Mike?
Yeah, you got it.
Doing here. We're saying, okay, we're not gonna build all those houses. So this is wonderful for that respect. And we're gonna keep all of this as open and free uh public land.
Okay, that's wonderful. So to reiterate, as I'm hearing you speak, when I look at these different lots, like Lot One, Two, Three, Four, all the way through Six, this will, this will all, none of this development, streets, houses that I see on these maps, this is not the plan for this land currently, correct?
That's a plan currently. Tonight, we're here to abandon it all.
Okay, cool.
Redivide it so that it could be uh paid for by all these various entities that Honor is trying to herd together.
I, I really, I really appreciate that clarification. Because when I saw this map, I panicked a little bit, not gonna, not gonna lie. So thank you, everyone, for your hard work.
Oh, thank you for being here and, and showing up and asking questions. I thought somebody else would want to, you know, was, at the same time, anybody else? No? Going once, going twice? All right, so Michael, we can close the public hearing then? All right, so uh we are closing the public hearing. Um, and we can go into discussion with the commissioners, is that correct? So, um, so for the five commi, and people can stay on and listen if they'd like to, but we cannot have any more public comment at this point. Um, so I'll open it up to the commissioners. Any questions, comments?
I move that we make a motion to release the conservation easements associated with the Meadowwood subdivision.
Is there a?
Actually, actually, hold on. First, first you should vote on the re-subdivision first. And the second one is, it's, there's actually two things, and I'm so sorry, it's so confusing. We have the re-subdivision, but we also have to do the referral for the release because the Board of Selectmen will be having a public hearing Thursday night uh regarding the release of the easements. So you have two actions, but we'll do, I know it's kind of, it's backwards the way we're gonna do it. We're gonna do the re-subdivision first.
Okay, so I make a motion that we um do the re-subdivision. Uh, can you help me with some words here?
Um, so you would, you'd wanna make a motion to approve the re-subdivision. And I just had one suggested uh condition. And that is that the applicants prepare two Mylar sets to be signed by the chairman. One will be filed on the Simsbury Land Records with the town clerk. And the second set is to be filed with the Engineering Department.
I so move.
So uh, just clarifying question on that, Mike. Is it Bill, the chairman, or is it Aaron, the acting chairman?
Bill's gonna have to sign this.
Yeah.
Even though we're agreeing to it.
Oh. Well, yeah, because there would be a majority, right? I mean, if, if we vote, oh. That's a good question, Julie, because.
I'm a detail girl, Aaron.
I know, no, that I, thought about that. All right, so is there a second to Holly and Michael's motion? Well, but, so second, Rich is seconding. Is there a discussion?
Rich, you're on mute.
I saw your hand went. So is there any?
I was gonna say, I um, I seconded the motion to approve the re-subdivision of the Meadowwood property along with the requirement for the Mylars, as stated by Mike a little bit earlier.
So any discussion amongst the commissioners? No? All right, so all those in favor of the uh motion, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? All right, so the motion passes five to zero. All right, so that's the first motion. The second motion now, Holly, I think you can make your.
Okay, I, I move we release the conservation easements associated with the Meadowwood subdivision.
Actually, you, you're, it's a referral pursuant date twenty-four. So you're just gonna find that, I, I, I'll help you. You're gonna find that the release of the easements are consistent with the goals, the goals and objectives of the two thousand seventeen Plan of Conservation Development.
Okay, I'll even repeat that one. So we find that the release of the conservation easements associated with the Meadowwood subdivision are in accordance with the uh two thousand seventeen Plan of Conservation and Development for Simsbury.
And therefore, we're giving a positive referral.
Oh, and therefore, we're giving a positive referral.
Okay. Anybody second that? David Bloomy seconds. Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes five to zero. All right. And then I think, Michael, the Board of Selectmen is having a meeting tomorrow on some of this?
Uh, Thursday night, Thursday night. Thursday, Thursday will be the public hearing for the release of the conservation easements.
Okay.
So, but we had to go first to do the referral and do the re-subdivision in order for them to release everything.
Gotcha. All right.
And, and all I have left for the commission, I know, uh, Bill forwarded to the commission and Dave, thanks for sharing it, was the um, the PowerPoint presentation from the last CROG meeting concerning the twenty twenty-one uh legislative session update. I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at that. It was in your Dropbox, but it also was emailed to the group.
Yeah.
Yeah, I only looked at the maps. I did not look at the PowerPoint.
I looked at, I looked at the PowerPoint. But um, Michael, can I just say, I mean, people are happy to stay on, but um, if people don't, I, I fully understand, so feel free um to drop off. But you're more than welcome to stay on for the rest of the meeting. So, and thank you, Honor. Thank you for all the work on Meadowwood.
Thanks for having me and, and letting me speak tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Always, always good to see you.
You too. All right, thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Hey, Honor.
All right. I just didn't wanna keep people on if they, you know.
David Bloomy, we know you're talking, but we can't hear you.
No, now he's, yeah, can you? I had that same issue on my computer. David, I had that same issue. That's why I'm on the laptop, which isn't as good. Yeah, I don't know, my Zoom won't let me have audio. Do you know sign language?
Or the stuff you.
Okay.
We figured out with that.
Okay.
Do, do you wanna um maybe table this for the next meeting or? I mean, it's, it's, the, the presentation is pretty comprehensive. I also have an, another legislative guide I can share with the commission that the um Connecticut Chapter, the American Planning Association, put together that kind of goes in the same, kind of breaks down the same details on, on really the, the big was the zoning enabling uh bill uh on the reorganization. The other was just the implementer bill and the fact that, um, so we can have three types of meetings now until April of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we could stay remote, we could go to hybrid, which we're trying, which we've only done two meetings in hybrid, or we can go back to have full in-person, pre-COVID meetings in the main meeting room. And that's something that maybe the commission can, you know, we can talk about this, decide and how you wanna proceed in the future. And I think maybe we should, in fairness to Bill and Alan, maybe, and Craig, maybe wait till everyone's present to make that call.
Yeah, Michael, I can't be at the meeting in two weeks. I'll be on vacation. I'm comfortable with any model. So just, you know, for people that are there, I'll, I'll do whatever people feel comfortable. I, I, I'll stay remote, I'll do hybrid, I'll go in person. I mean, I, I feel kind of comfortable with everything, so I'll go with what the, the majority wants. the majority want. Um, so feel free to vote in two weeks if everyone's here. Um, you know, I'll, I'll do whatever.
Yeah, and the way that the law works now, um, it's if one person of the commission says, hey, I want to, I I can't come in person tonight, I want to be remote, then we're going to be hybrid. Um, we have to honor those requests. Um, so, you know, that that option will be on the table regardless of if if we are hybrid to begin with or in the main meeting room.
So can I ask a question? If if we do hybrid, does that limit where we can do the meetings?
Well, so so we bought what's called these Owl Labs, which is basically they're a camera. Um, watch the two most recent meetings of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Um, they just started using them. The first meeting had a little issues. Second meeting, uh, this past Monday night, it went off without a hitch. Um, so you know, that's where we're gonna try. The zoning commission is going to try a hybrid meeting this coming Monday.
Okay.
So, you know, fingers crossed.
Were they in the main room where we usually meet?
No, we're gonna be in the library. The way we're setting it up, that's the thing. When when if we go, well, well, right now, if we go hybrid, we're gonna go to the library because we have it all set up to function in the program room or the tariff fill room. Um, but we have purchased five Owl Labs, so eventually, one will be in the main meeting room, too. So we may, we may be able to do a hybrid meeting at at Town Hall. So
All right, but right now it's at the, at the library. So
Right now, it'll be at the library.
We'll definitely still be remote like this until there's a decision made.
Yeah. I mean, I would, I would say, you know, a- as your staff member, you know, I, we're gonna test, we're gonna test the limits this coming Monday night with the zoning commission.
Okay.
I'd almost would say wait until, let's see what happens with zoning. They have three public hearings scheduled. So if it's gonna go wrong, it's gonna go wrong that night.
All right.
And 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 I don't want this commission to be placed, you know, if we were having like tonight's public hearing, trying to try some, a new technology while having a public hearing, that's important. Um, and on a short timeframe.
All right, so I just want, so everyone knows, so the meeting in two weeks will be virtual through Zoom, and then you guys can all decide, you know, going forward. All right.
And and I unfortunately, I will be on vacation in two weeks, so um, you'll probably have either Laura or Tom covering the meeting for me. Laura didn't find, didn't know about that.
Unfortunately, vacation.
Uh, well, it's been a while.
So it's
It's unfortunate. I enjoy my Tuesday nights with you.
Let us know, ghosts.
Don't be missing us.
I'll be, I'll watch you on YouTube.
Have a good time.
Thank you.
I know, I thought about remoting in, but I don't, I don't know where I'm gonna be. So I was like, no, it's just easier to say I can't be here. So um, all right, so we'll table David's PowerPoint till the next meeting, and then we'll, um, there'll be a vote on, you know, how to proceed with meetings uh, after, what is it, uh, July 27th? Okay. And we only meet once in August, correct? We meet the the fourth.
The fourth Tuesday.
The fourth Tuesday. Right, so we don't need, all right. Um, is there any correspondence, any other business?
That's it for tonight.
And Michael, are people back, town employees back in the office or just full-time, part-time?
We're, we're back full-time and we're open to the public five days a week. Uh, unfettered now, so we don't, you know, normally, uh, previously, we were asking people prior to July 1, you had to come in, you had to sign in. Um, it it, uh, we were requiring masks indoors. Now, i- if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. Um, and we, we're not requiring anymore to check in and sign in to tell which department you're going to. We're open, like, the only difference is if you're on, if you're not vaccinated, you have to wear masks. So.
Great.
And you're back at the state now?
Fifty percent, though. It's not final, but I I was in today. I'll go in tomorrow for a little while. So yeah, basically, I'm I'm back 50%.
Yeah.
Yeah. What was that?
I'm the test case for 80%. You'll see my name in all the lawsuits.
Oh, you're, yeah, I'm not 80. I'll be 50. So starting this week, we're starting to to ease back 50%, so.
We don't go back till October 4th.
Oh.
That's our return date, yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah. Yep, the governor wants us back, so we have to go back. 50%. Hey, it could have been, I could have been asked to go back full-time, so I'm I'm happy. So, all right.
So I make a motion?
Yes, please do.
Move to adjourn?
Oh, everybody
They all seconded.
We'll put Julie down.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, I'll miss you guys in two weeks, but have a good couple of weeks, and I'll see you in August. Thank you, Michael.
We have to vote. We have to vote first.
Oh, we have to vote, yes. All in favor of adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned.
Bye, everyone.
Thanks.